All right, we're gonna call the meetings a session. For the special meeting, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, at five fifteen P. M. All trustees are here. Next on the agenda is public comment.
Next on the agenda is the public comment period of our board meeting. A public comment is an opportunity for individuals to directly address the board of trustees. It is a limited forum. Individuals wishing to participate must complete the request to speak form and submit it to the executive director of communications, Nicole Lyons, at least fifteen minutes prior to the start of the meeting. By completing the request to speak form, each speaker has acknowledged they will abide by the decorum protocols stated on such form. Pursuant to board operating procedures, the board has allotted thirty minutes for public comment period, but the time may be adjusted at the board president's discretion to allow for the orderly conduct of the board meeting. At this meeting tonight, we have three speakers, so each speaker will have three minutes. If groups wish to speak on the same topic, the board may ask, but is not required, that a spokesperson be appointed to speak for the group. This is not the forum to present allegations of employee misconduct, requests for employee discipline, lodging personal attacks, shaming to meeting specific named G C I S D employees, or unnecessarily disclosing private information about G C I S D employees or students. The board will only consider personnel or student complaints that remain unresolved after they have been addressed through the grievance process and when they have been placed in the board agenda for hearing or action. Please see G C I S D Board Policies, D G B A, Employee F N G, Students and Families, and G F Public. These policies are designed to secure prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns by allowing for a full hearing and investigation. Each of these procedures allows for an individual to regress grievances with the board of trustees. Upon request, our executive director of communications will provide you with copies of these policies, or you can find them online at the district website. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board may not deliberate or decide any subject that is not included on the night, on the meeting's agenda, and may not respond to comments made or questions asked during the public comment period. If an issue was mentioned, if an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, board members may respond to comments when the agenda item is considered later in the meeting. Please understand that allowing speakers to make statements during a public comment period is not an endorsement of those statements by the board or district. The statements made by an individual speaker are the opinion of that speaker and not necessarily the opinion of the board, individual trustees, or other district employees. We will call persons to speak in the order we receive their form. Our first speaker tonight is Joe Costa. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of G C I S D.
Great. I'm Joe Costa, a Grapevine resident, taxpayer, and I vote in each of the elections that I'm allowed to. Last weekend, I learned about the indictments of two Grapevine City employees. They were accused of misusing public funds, and if convicted, are facing twenty years behind bars. Then this morning, I noticed a special meeting agenda where the private consultant of the board's attorney is scheduled to discuss the I prep, I University Prep investigation. In addition, three G C I S D employees, the administrator, the curriculum writer, and the bookkeeper were put on leave last July. I'm asking the board to please be transparent and as possible regarding the process you choose for the investigation of I University Prep. We understand the details of the investigation cannot be made public, but the steps the board is taking to get the facts can be disclosed. Although these two events are not related, I'm here to ask the board to not make this, or take the same route as Grapevine City managers did. And please, you know, handle this, this matter in an open and as in the public forum as possible. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Greg Gardner. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of G C I S D.
Hi, my name is Greg, and I am a resident of Grapevine. And tonight, I just want to come to you and thank you for the investigation into I University Prep that you're overseeing. And without knowing your findings, I can already, you know, tell that I have a high level of confidence in the investigation. And my confidence is for several different reasons. One of those is oversight. You've taken responsibility seriously when you're presented with a problem, and you've taken the initiative to, to properly investigate it, and I thank you for that. Impartiality, to conduct the investigation, you've hired an impartial investigator, Candy Hanger, and this helps to ensure that the investigation and its findings will not be biased in any way, so I thank you for that. Thoroughness, the investigation required time to be as thorough as possible, and I think you've allowed that to happen without jumping to conclusions. So I just want to thank you for that. And then transparency, so when dealing with taxpayer dollars, it's, it's very important that to keep the public informed. And you did that as the investigation began, and you're doing that again tonight, and so I'm also thankful for that. And then lastly, but certainly not least, accountability. It's important that if, if you do find wrongdoing, that you hold those responsible, accountable. And your actions thus far, you know, give us reason to believe that you'll not do anything less than that, and so I want to thank you for that. So for all these reasons, I have a high confidence in the, how you've conducted the investigation, and I'm certain that you will continue to hold yourselves to this very high standard. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our third speaker is Robert Smullen. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of G C I S D.
My name's Robert Smullen, and live in Colleyville. Seems like this is a hot topic. I'd like to affirm the board, especially President Ford, for his leadership in uncovering what appears to be a fraudulent activities with I University. For the members of the old guard, this chronic and apparently systemic issue should cause each of you some serious pause. Because this, if it comes true, this was under your watch, and there'll be accountability. With my experience in healthcare regarding compliance and oversight issues, I have to ask of the board. One, has a forensic audit been, been, been put into motion? And if not, when will that occur? For anyone in the room here that isn't familiar with the forensic audit, what that will do is it will directly point out who was involved, the magnitude of the dollars, and for how long. And in addition, it would also clearly, clearly define by omission those individuals that potentially turned a blind eye. My second question is, what processes did the administration put in the place from the get-go to ensure financial integrity of the board of this business unit that's part of the school system? Thank you very much.
Thank you. This concludes the open forum part of our meeting.
Next on the agenda, we will dismiss to go to executive session at five twenty-two. Code section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law, legal advice regarding investigation into I University Prep. In section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. We're now, we're now, we are now back in open session at six twenty-seven. Next item on the agenda. Item A, which is take possible action regarding I University Prep investigation as necessary following a report of board counsel. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion, Casey. I move that the board direct Dr. Ryan to instruct any G C I S D employee pertinent to any investigation with I University Prep, excuse me, with, to any investigation into I University Prep to cooperate fully.
Second, Kathy seconds. All those in favor, the recommendation and the motion? Seven, all those opposed, zero, motion passes seven-zero. Do I have a motion for adjournment? Coley?
I move that we adjourn.
Motion, oh, no, second, Tammy. All those in favor? Seven-zero, motion passes seven-zero. We'll start the meeting in just a little bit. The, the video system is out, so they're bringing a camera in here and getting it set up so we can film the meeting, just F Y I. Okay, actually, we are back up, so that's just our backup camera. All right, we will have called order at seven oh-one, man, seven oh-one P. M. All trustees are here. Okay. At this time, the Grapevine Colleyville Independent School District Board of Trustees and Central Administration will pause for a moment of silence to reflect on the continued success of our district, the safety and well-being of our students, our dedicated teachers and staff, and our supportive community. Thank you. Before continuing this evening, I would like to remind everyone in attendance that this is a time and place for deliberation through which the board of trustees conducts the business of the school district. As the presiding officer, I expect all those in attendance to behave with decorum, giving all those present, including trustees, district administrators, and members of the public their attention and respect. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board has designated a time during today's meeting in which individuals have the opportunity to address the board. Comments from those in attendance are not permitted outside of the specified, the specified public comment period as they disrupt the, the ability of the board to conduct the business of the district. If, after at least one warning from the presiding officer, any individual continues to disrupt the meeting, by his or her words or actions, the presiding officer may request assistance from law enforcement officials to have the individual removed from the meeting. The board shall not tolerate disruption of the meeting by members of the audience. So basically what that means, in other, in other words, please be respectful, please be professional. We have administrators, we have students, principals, teachers who have to get to school tomorrow, so we act to just act in a professional manner at all times. Okay, now, now we'll have the U. S. Texas, the U. S. and Texas pledges. And tonight, we are honored to have students from Colleyville Middle School join us to lead the pledges, and they will proudly represent their school by leading the U. S. pledge, followed by the Texas pledge, and then share thoughts on how they are progressing towards the portrait of a graduate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Good evening. I'm Seven Tennyson, and I'm involved in PALS, Hope Squad, N J S, Stuco President, and numerous focus groups.
Good evening. My name is Addie Gormley. I am in cheer, PALS, and avid ambassador, and I am in numerous focus groups and in student panels.
Tonight, we have the privilege of sharing our stories of how we go about being a portrait of a graduate at Colleyville Middle School.
We like to do things a bit differently at C M S, and with that said, we have put together a video for you to share our portrait of a graduate story.
We hope you enjoy the video that has many visuals of our school life.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Addie Gormley.
And I'm Seven Tennyson.
And we are proud Colts from Colleyville Middle School.
At Colleyville Middle School, we have what seems to be endless opportunities to be model students.
Colleyville Middle School has been named a Texas school to watch, and we are a nationally recognized model campus.
We have amazing traditions at C M S, yet we still have the ability to be innovative, to be the best we can be.
At C M S, we are problem solvers. We have daily opportunities to be academic risk takers. Our amazing teachers find ways to motivate and stretch our speech skills. We take on learning with flexibility and tenacity. We exhibit an independent work ethic and follow through with perseverance.
As an example, staff like our biology teacher find ways to create exciting learning environments, creating engaging lessons through augmented reality, also known as A R, to help bring aspects of science to life. This allows us to see three D images of what we are learning, providing us with the information that we need to be problem solvers and successful with the content that is being taught.
At C M S, we are effective communicators. Student voice is seen and heard all over Colleyville Middle School.
At school, we are given ways to have our voices heard. We are proud to say that students always come first to our school. We have a cool student voice while next to our cafeteria, where we can give feedback for our school at any time. Also, many of our teachers ask for feedback on how the class can improve. As a student, it's pretty neat to have our voices heard.
We also, student voice groups are assembled to get our feedback.
We were front and center as a student panel group for the entire staff when they came back from their professional development in August. They want to know what we think.
Students are a part of our campus excellence committee.
Sometimes, we also help interview future teachers when asked to be on hiring committees. Our voices are heard daily, which gives us many opportunities to be effective communicators, just like this opportunity to share this video with you.
We are collaborative workers. Collaboration is all over C M S.
We get many opportunities to collaborate with each other, teachers and support staff, which helps us build positive relationships with our fellow Colts.
We know that each of us will have our own personal strengths, and together as a team, which is a core value at C M S, we are stronger and better together.
We are global citizens, knowing that the internet connects us around the world, which can impact our professional future. We learn how to be productive citizens.
Colts love to serve. Every year, we have ways that we give back to our society that become traditions. Our student leadership groups, in addition to the rest of the student body, participate in many giving events, like being partners with American Airlines and Make-A-Wish Foundation. Our traditional annual color run was founded by our student leadership group, seeking a way to help one of our fellow Colts, was battling cancer, and created a fundraiser for him.
Our Colleyville Middle School team, together with the rest of our student leadership groups, staff, and P T A, put on an amazing color run event each year that is now an annual tradition at C M S. We are also currently taking out food donations in partnership with the Grace Food Drive and our Dad's Club to give back to our community.
At C M S, we are self-regulated learners. These past three years, I've learned a lot.
Colleyville Middle School has been the perfect place to grow as a self-regulated learner, which has helped me get ready for high school and my future. I know I feel prepared to take on whatever the future holds because of all the lessons that we have learned along the way.
C M S is a special place.
And I am proud to be a Colt.
Once a Colt, always a Colt.
Thank you, Dr. David Arntseba, Colleyville Middle School principal, and the students and staff of C M S who have helped with tonight's presentation. Again, those students joining us here tonight are Addison Gormley and Seven Tennyson. Dr. A, do you have any other special asks for staff you would like to recognize tonight?
Of course, we have our parents here that are supporting as well.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Superintendent Dr. Robin Ryan for our lead two-point-oh highlights, followed by recognitions.
Thank you very much, and I would like to say to Addison and to Seven, you guys are gonna be like news anchors or something. Now, y'all did that whole, you did that whole video like that together. That was fantastic. Good job. As we continue to use our strategic plan, lead two-point-oh to guide our work, each month, we highlight a different aspect of the district in this portion of the meeting to show our trustees and our community how lead two-point-oh is impacting our students. This month, we're gonna have Chief Technology Officer Kyle Berger, who and his team will highlight technology in G C I S D. Mr. Berger.
Thank you very much, and what a great use of technology by our C M S kids, right? Saw some awesome stuff in those videos there. That's great. Well, tonight, we're gonna talk to you about technology in our district and really pulling back to our three values there, purpose, innovation, and community, and show you how we incorporate that through everything that we do. And to get started, I'm gonna have our executive director of technology, Dwight Goodwin, kind of go over some of the numbers and facts here around technology from this year so far.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. All right, so you'll notice the fish hook in the upper left-hand corner. I'm gonna do a little clockwise rotation here, and that represents the, we, every month, we send out simulated fishing attacks in the district. And at first, we were getting about a hundred people recognizing that they were fish. Last month, we had a record number, five-hundred-and-eighty-one, so that's almost a third of our staff members are reporting the fish. And they're, they're, they're getting so prevalent, they're like, well, I reported it, did I, did I, did I, did I report it right? We're like, no, that's a real fishing attempt. So there, it's one of those things that the training really helps. The next one over is the Class Link logo, and that's our single sign-on portal. Three-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand logons in a month. So what, what used to hap, what, what used to happen in the old days? You would have to log in, like, you would have to know a username and password for every single system. So they would get, kind of get bogged down, like, I forgot my password for this system or this system, it's something else. With Class Link and single sign-on, it's once, it's one click, and you get to all your resources, so it saves a lot of class time. The next one, this is a fascinating number. It's the Google website, but we have, in a month worth of time, we have a twenty, a hundred-and-twenty-eight million sites visited per month. And then you're like, well, what's the ten-point-eight? Ten-point-eight million we block because they're not, they're not deemed necessary for educational purposes. So that's kind of just a crazy number. The next one, Zendesk. Zendesk is our help desk ticket, and this one I'm really proud of, because you'll notice it says two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine tickets open, and then it says two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety closed. So that means we are, we are taking care of business. So once, once you get something wrong with your technology, you fill out a ticket, you get an answer, and you're back up and running in a very short time. The next one down there in the bottom of the corner, it's, it's shaped like a V. That's our vector solution. That's how we do our compliance, compliance training, so bloodborne pathogens, et cetera, some stuff like that. We had, our staff completed four-thousand-and-ninety-four training, so we, we are, we are very compliant. The next one is a Chromebook. So every year, first through third grade, I'm sorry, first through second graders get iPads. So when they switch over to a Chromebook, we want to make sure they're trained up. We want them to make sure that they know how to use the Chromebook and the intricacies. So that represents the number of third graders that took our Chromebook training class, so they know how to operate the Chromebook. The next one, this is, this is, this is pretty cool. Per day, we have twenty-five-thousand devices on our network, and that's per day. And you're like, wait a second, there's only like fourteen-thousand kids here. So that means most people are carrying around two devices. And I think when we plan the network out, the, I think we planned it for actual three, so we still have room to grow, but it is, that's, that's quite an intimidating number. The next one is, is one of my, this one is the most fascinating, because I'm like, this is the, probably the hardest one to get right. So every year, we have to report back to the state through P E M S, and we report to T E A, we have to, and every student and staff member has about a hundred data points. So that comes to about one-point-four million data points, and it's not like math class, you don't get partial credit. They have to be correct, they have to be accurate, or they just send it back and say, hey, guess what, do it again. So four times a year, we have to get one-point-four million data points exactly correct. So that's one of the, and, and we do it every year. So that's one of the really cool things that we do here in G C I S D, so that kind of, kind of takes over some technology by the numbers.
So that's a snapshot from like a thirty-day period there. So that's, I think, shows a lot of how we use technology to support it here in the district. Part of our effort, as we talked before, and around our community aspect of what we do is our fiber optic project, with our partnership with the city of Grapevine and the city of Colleyville as well. So you can see where we're at in our process of over fourteen, almost fifteen miles of fiber in place with about sixteen miles to go. Right now, of course, constraints, as we've all heard, and other operational facilities and reports is around fiber optics. So we're currently pending arrival of thirty, thirty miles of fiber from our suppliers with the city, so we're kind of in a little bit of a hole, but we're on target with getting all the rest of our network piping and everything in place for when that comes in. So picture there is one of our staff members out splicing the fiber, actually, you know, out on the street from our, our staff that we have here that helps support that initiative. And it's a great partnership we have with our cities. One of the other things that's really important and a passion of mine is the community outreach aspect of what we do. Our parent tech academies, we hold a monthly and sometimes twice a month to educate our parents on all sorts of different aspects of technology. We have our technology bus there at the bottom, and interesting thing, this year, we really made a big push on online registration and child nutrition food applications for free and reduced lunch. And we studied back and can see a correlation of an increase of three-hundred students into that process, which could equate to almost half a million dollar increase in availability for that outreach and getting those students. And that's what's really important with what we're doing. And that's what's really important with what we're doing, is getting beyond just our walls, getting out there in apartment complexes or other places in our city to reach out to our community. We also see our technology trailer and stuff that we do, other events or community events like trunk retreat and things, reaching out to our kids with all that we can. Another big point, as we hear, and we heard, of course, from our CMS students, is student advisory and student voice. So I conduct student advisory committees. You see there at the bottom, I'm quite interested in learning from this. They, they tell me everything they want, you know, and what's wrong with everything in technology there. I might look a little confused, trying to understand what they're telling me sometimes, but we get great feedback listening to our students, and we do this at all grade levels. So meet from elementary, middle, and the high school students to hear what's working for you, what's not working, how can we make it better? Some of these are just small things that they've kinda told us, and we've been able to go back in and add to make their experience better at school, and how we can then help their teachers as well make their experience better in the classroom. Because they're our biggest customers, I guess you could say, on the front lines. We wanna hear from them on what we can do better overall. The next thing that is part of our innovation is we were one of the first five years ago with our esports program and our student help desk program. So on esports, we had a huge event this weekend. We brought in over 300 kids from about 19 districts around DFW to compete in a competition, and it was had over $20,000 in prizes given from all sorts of sponsorships. And esports has been growing for us, and now we're kind of one of the showcases out for the country on what you can do with esports, going beyond the game and actual curriculum building towards a billion-dollar industry that's out there for our students. Our student help desk is a part of where we really take in our students and leverage our partnership with Dell to where our students now can get certified to work on our equipment and help break, fix the equipment themselves. Our students get their certification within that first nine weeks period. That certification is applicable out in the community so much now that we have companies calling us, asking us if we have kids ready, that they have jobs waiting to be filled. So we are one of the first with that program, and now mentor others across the country every summer on how to expand those programs out. We're really proud of what we're doing with that additional student engagement. One of our last things here is a initiative we've been working on a few years. It's our dashboard data warehousing in a sense. So we put all of our data points, we mentioned 1.4 million different data points, we pull into a program to where we can drill down data down to the student on all different aspects, from daily attendance to grades, to find any correlation we can in the data to how we can focus our efforts instructionally or behaviorally on our campuses. So this is just a quick little graph there. Our principals have one that's individual for their campus. They can drill down to the teacher, the grade, the student as well, to really get a better understanding of how the data is reflecting their campus, and we try to empower them with that overall. So that's kind of just a quick rundown for us on just the various things that we are doing around technology in the district. To give you kind of a summary there, definitely open for any questions or other thoughts you might have around that.
Well, thank you, Kyle. Appreciate it.
Awesome. Fast.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. And what, one of the things I, I want to impress upon our community is all of the challenges that he outlined, he and Dwight both outlined, they, they overcome those on a daily basis, and he didn't even mention the efforts for cybersecurity, which we all know are incredibly high. And so thank you to Mr. Berger and your team. You, you guys are doing tremendous job, and we really appreciate the work that you're doing. Next, we'll move to recognitions. Our first recognition this evening, I'd like to invite trustee Kathy Spradley to present a special award to someone we've already heard tonight, Dr. David Aaron Sibia. Dr. Aaron Sibia, come up here and be uncomfortable in front of everybody. The National Association of Secondary School Principals named Dr. David Aaron Sibia one of three finalists in the country for National Principal of the Year. Aaron Sibia has taught, coached, and served as an administrator at all secondary levels in his 22 years of education. As an assistant principal, he was named the Region 11 Assistant Principal of the Year for the State of Texas. And as the current principal of Colleyville Middle School, the school has received several accolades and distinctions under his leadership, including being named a Texas School to Watch, a nationally recognized model campus, and a national PTA School of Excellence. He was recently, like this last weekend, he was honored at a gala in Arlington, Virginia, by the National Association of Secondary School Principals as one of the top three principals in the country. Congratulations to Dr. David Aaron Sibia for this much deserved honor in representing Colleyville Middle School. David, can you tell us a little bit about the gala and your events this weekend? Listen, if you're in the top three, you can talk extemporaneously for about 60 seconds.
No, it was definitely an honor, privilege, and I'll just tell you, the, the thing that was a highlight to me is I had an opportunity to present in front of all the state and, and Principals of the Years from around the country. And we kicked off that, that special event, and it was amazing because I was able to put the focus where the focus belongs, and that's on these kids. And they are the reason for our successes and our wonderful families and communities that support us in this school district right here. We have a lot of great things going on, and there's a lot of positivity and a lot of things that we can definitely point to of the things that are going well in education. And these two young ladies that, that we saw and heard of are a perfect example of that. So it was just my honor to be able to showcase and highlight the wonderful things going on. So it was just my privilege to do that. So thank you.
Congratulations, David. Congratulations. Next, we'll ask trustees Shannon Braun and Becky St. John to make your way to present our next awards, which are for our cross-country state champions, medalists, and qualifiers. And here they come. The boys' cross-country team from Grapevine High School and the girls' cross-country teams from both Grapevine High School and Colleyville Heritage High School qualified for the UIL 5A State Cross-Country Championships in Round Rock on November the 5th and came away with an impressive number of awards. Grapevine High School Girls finished in fifth place, and from that team, we have Lily Edmondson, Breland Francis, Molly Gomez, Sarah Halliburton, Blakely Hines, Colley Hines, Julia Kramer, Caitlin McCown, Alexandria Navarro, and Mary Schnouts. Caitlin, we ready? You need one more picture? You good? Okay. Okay. We got, this is awesome. All right. Colleyville Heritage High School Girls came in fourth place. Here to represent the Panthers this evening are Annabelle Butler, Hayden Cowdery, Aria Digicar, Ally Love. Ally also was the bronze medalist individually. Bonnie Miller, Josie Osborne, and Olivia Sandoval. I don't wanna understate this. The people that you see in front of us were in the top five teams in the state of Texas in Class 5A. And that is an incredible feat. It's a very difficult sport. I don't get it. Run as far as you want to. But they get it, and we see them all over our community, and we're so proud of the fourth and fifth place finish at the, at the state meet. It's, it's very incredible. And now, for the third consecutive year, I'm proud to introduce our state champions, the GHS Boys. Matthew Barbocca, Blaine Bradford, Adam Burlison. Adam has got some more jewelry around his neck because he was the silver medalist in the individual awards. Cole Comer, Andrew DeYoung, Drew Finnegan, Ryan Kerr, Justin Leathers, bronze medalist Alberto Real, Charles Smith, and Truman Sue. And we'd also wanna recognize the amazing coaches that we have for these programs and attend us this evening. From Colleyville Heritage High School, Nick Taylor and Amanda McCready. And from Grapevine High School, Rick Miller, Andy Jacobs, Andrew Martinez, and Miriam Morales. At our board meetings, we typically recognize our students and our staff that are recognized for excellence at the state level. And you can see a full house tonight of our cross-country teams who have been recognized at the state level. We're so proud of you, and we really appreciate all the hard work that you put in this year. Let's give them another big round of applause. And I would like for everybody just to stay right there because we do have one more recognition this evening, and that is for Coach Rick Miller. Coach Miller? The University Interscholastic League and the National Federation of State High School Associations has named GHS's Rick Miller as the 2021 State Coach of the Year for the Boys' Cross Country. Coach Miller has served as the GHS Cross Country Coach since 2012, and according to UIL, recipients of this award reflect excellent coaching abilities on and off the athletic arena. And Miller's service has not gone unnoticed. During his 39 years in education, he's received many other awards, including the U.S. Track and Field and Cross Country Coaches Association, Texas High School Boys' Cross Country Coach of the Year, and the Cross Country Coaches Association, Texas Boys' Coach of the Year, the Fort Worth Tower Telegrams Boys' Cross Country Coach of the Year, and Cross Country Coaches Association of Texas Girls' Coaches of the Year. Congratulations to Coach Rick Miller and the Grapevine Mustangs and the Colleyville Heritage Panthers. And if you are a parent and you haven't taken your pictures yet, please do. We thank you for being here this evening. And this concludes tonight's recognitions. Thank you very much.
All right. Congratulations, guys. Next on the agenda is the public comment section. Kathy?
Next on the agenda is the public comment period of our board meeting. While public comment is an opportunity for individuals to directly address the Board of Trustees, it is a limited forum. Individuals wishing to participate must complete the request to speak form and submit to the Executive Director of Communications, Nicole Lyons, at least 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. By completing the request to speak form, each speaker has acknowledged they will abide by the decorum protocol stated on such form. Pursuant to the board operating procedures, the board has allotted 30 minutes for public comment period, but the time may be adjusted at the board president's discretion to allow for the orderly conduct of the board's meeting. Tonight, we have 35 speakers, so each speaker will have one minute. If groups wish to speak on the same topic, the board may ask, but is not required, that a spokesperson be appointed to speak for the group. This is not the forum to present allegations of employee misconduct, requests for employee discipline, lodging personal attacks, shaming, demeaning specific-named GCIC employees, or unnecessarily disclosing private information about GCIC employees or students. The board will only consider personnel or student complaints that remain unresolved after they have been addressed through the grievance process and when they have been placed on the board agenda for hearing or action. Please see GCIC board policies DGBA, Employee-E, F&amp;G, Students and Families, and GF Public. These policies are designed to secure prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns by allowing for a full hearing and investigation. Each of these procedures allows for an individual to redress grievances with the Board of Trustees. Upon request, our Executive Director of Communications will provide you with copies of these policies, or you can find them online at the district website. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board may not deliberate or decide any subject that is not included on the meeting's agenda and may not respond to comments made or questions asked during the public comment period. If an issue, if an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, board members may respond to comments when the agenda item is considered later in the meeting. Please understand that allowing speakers to make statements during the public comment period is not an endorsement of those statements by the board or the district. The statements made by an individual speaker are the opinion of that speaker and not necessarily the opinion of the board, individual trustees, or the district. We will call persons to speak in order we receive their form. Our first speaker is Mario Cordova. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCIC.
All right. Good evening, trustees of the board. Dr. Ryan, my name is Mario Cordova, and I live in GCIC. I wanna talk this evening about raising the academic bar for all students. I think the core of making this happening, happen is investing in a rigorous curriculum for the entire district. I can appreciate that teachers wanna have the freedom to run the classrooms as they please, but there's a difference between the content of classroom materials and then the strategies used within them. From what I've seen, there's very little consistency between schools when it comes to content. It seems like teachers are having to make up their own lessons on a classroom-by-classroom basis. Wouldn't it be fantast, fantastic if all the best, teaks-aligned learning resources from all the teachers were compiled into one unified cache that our teachers could draw from? What I'm talking about here is giving kids at every school the same opportunities to utilize the same quality materials. At that point, it'd be up to each of the teachers to work their magic respectively to engage those students. I'd like to thank district leadership and support staff for working out the details to flesh out the district's curriculum.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Barb Watson. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCIC.
Good evening. I'm Barb Watson, and I am a resident of GCIC. Everything that we have seen with our students, our coaches, and our teachers tonight have all been under the great leadership of Dr. Ryan. And it is heartbreaking to me that we are losing the best of the best in district leadership. In the past, when we've searched, everybody, the cream of the crop, wanted to come to GCIC, but because the foremajority have basically pressured Dr. Ryan to retire early, why would the best want to come here? When Casey stands out in July... When Casey stands out in July and yells, slams a gavel and says, "I'm the president. I run this district." Why would the best want to come and inherit Tammy's lawsuit when she breaks the confidentiality agreement and causes our entire communications department?
Thank you. Our third speaker is Erin Rowan. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Hi, my name is Erin Rowan. I am a member of the district. I want to bring to attention tonight and also clear the air for those listening regarding the vision the board has for books in our schools that don't align with the state and local board policy. Some disinformation I have heard passed around by a few who may be intentionally lying to mislead many are saying the board is banning books. And these same agitators self-admittedly define a banned book as having been removed, restricted, or required signature without going through a thorough review process. By definition and by count, there has not been a single book banned as a result of EFB local policy. Instead, the vision the board has implemented is one that I fully support and complies with existing law to age-restrict books through a thorough review process and, if necessary, move to a parental consent area. This vision is guided by the American Library Association, who gives the rights and responsibilities of governing literary access to parents for their own children. Here, I want to say I thank the librarians for their continued efforts to weed out age-inappropriate and obscene materials and for always encouraging.
Thank you. Our fourth speaker is Patrick Shukas. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Hi, I'm Patrick Shukas and I'm a junior at Grapevine High School. I'm here to talk today about Ms. Guthrie, a teacher who's had an enormous impact on me and many of my peers during our time at GHS. She's been my teacher for two years now and I can say with absolute certainty that she is the reason for my love of history, because of her kindness to her students, dedication to her job, and passion for her work. Ms. Guthrie has never failed to express her love for all of her students and her gratitude for her job. And every class that I have spent with her has taught me something new and exciting. She's taught me not only how to write good essays, but also how to lead by example and inspire others. With the resignation of such a highly valuable teacher, not only to GHS but to the district as a whole, I can only hope it would lead you to consider the following. Does a teacher as excellent and well-respected as Ms. Guthrie is not deserve the chance to get to teach and inspire other students in the future the same way she has taught and inspired me? I ask that you do not take any action that would jeopardize the reputation and license of such a distinguished and influential teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. Our fifth speaker is Stephanie Paul Shukas. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I am a resident of GCISD. All right. We are a family who has tremendous appreciation for all those employed within this district to give your heart and soul to education, growth, and support of our kids every single day. To those who are doing the jobs of more than one person, to those who have stayed despite being reassigned to a position outside of your expertise, and to those who have tremendous gifts, expertise, and creativity that are being stifled and stuffed inside of a box. We see you and we thank you. We are also a family that is directly affected by Ms. Guthrie's resignation. As my son, who is a junior, is in one of her AP US History classes, I want to say to Ms. Guthrie, as a parent, a volunteer, a taxpayer in GCISD, and a human being, I am so sorry that the district environment has gotten so bad for you that you came to the conclusion that the best option was resigning, changing careers, and risking your gift of future teaching. We cannot thank you enough for the positive impact you have had on our child and others in the district. It is immeasurable and we are grateful to you.
Thank you. Our sixth speaker is Karen Bowles. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Karen Bowles, resident. President Ford and Board Majority, your political agenda is destroying everything that makes GCISD great. Did you know that for four years GCISD was ranked by our teachers in the top 100 places to work? Are you surprised this year we're not on the list? I'm not. Since you balanced the budget and implemented policies without regard to execution, we're losing talent. We have students self-teaching and classrooms covered by subs with no experience in their subjects. This concerns any parent, especially Aspire parents. Your policy and curriculum changes impacted Aspire classes at all levels, and now we're seeing a beloved Aspire teacher and Learning Department leader resigning. Here's who we're losing. A master's in educational leadership and policy, honored at GCISD Convocation for Positively Impacting a Student's Life, GHS Favorite Teacher, Sage Educator of the Year, Teacher of the Month, Champion for the First Ever Avid Three Olympics, National Conference Presenter Association for Gifted Children, invited to Teacher Appreciation Night by students across all sports, including my daughter. Be transparent. Add Aspire to an agenda item.
Thank you. Our seventh speaker is Caitlin Dodd. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
My name is Caitlin Dodd and I'm a resident of GCISD. I would like to talk about the continual lack of transparency that is occurring with board decisions. Last week, there were two presentations regarding search forms for a new superintendent. Obviously, the decision was already made before any discussion could occur. Why, as a district, would we want to limit the search to only local or regional area? We are a destination district that has been considered one of the top 100 places to work in GCISD. However, the district is no longer ranked as a top place to work. I'm sure due in part to the continual lack of trust shown to teachers from the board decisions. We need a new superintendent who knows how to rebuild trust within the faculty and staff workforce and who will work for the continual growth and improvement of our district, not one who will meet the majority's political needs. There must be transparency in the process. There is to be a brief update today on the process, but the single line on it tells us nothing. When will the town hall meetings and open forums be for those in the district to share their ideas about where the district should go? There needs to be multiple opportunities and not just online through a process that the representatives could not explain last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Our eighth speaker is Jamie Weatherall. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
My name is Jamie Weatherall and I'm a resident. Teachers crafting lesson plans that meet accommodations and modifications while also differentiating from multiple learners so that each and every student receives a year of academic growth? Thank you. Librarians rereading stacks of books so that kids can have the greatest opportunity to find the best book for them? Thank you. Paraprofessionals, who are the ones that make the schools possible? Thank you. Administrators supporting teachers and students at the expense of time with their own families and their mental and physical health? Thank you. Everyone learning to a greater extent how expansive extra duties as assigned can truly become? Thank you. Spending your life in education is difficult. I know. I've done it. In my 19 years as an educator, I never experienced the tension that currently lives in this community. The number of teachers who are leaving the district mid-semester or who are contemplating leaving at the break is alarming. I encourage you to take a moment this week to express gratitude for the people who are giving of themselves so our students have the best possible educational experience.
Thank you. Our ninth speaker is Christine Leathers. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD. Thank you.
Gracias.
Interpreting for Christine Leathers. United for GCISD's Community-Wide Scholastic Book Fair not only raised $10,000 and donated books and book credits, it united more than 700 people in two days. Our online fair is on through Friday. Literacy is important and our community has spoken. Our plan was to present this donation to you tonight. We are disappointed that after a week of trying, our current book policy is so complicated, unclear, and burdensome that we were unable to get the books in the hands of kids in a timely manner through GCISD. However, we are excited that through community partners, we will get these donations distributed in time for the holidays. Please reconsider this policy so that in the future GCISD can accept the gift of literacy on behalf of our students.
Thank you. Our 10th speaker is Rachel Wall. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Rachel Wall, I am a resident of GCISD. The current book approval process is still very unclear to people at all levels. There is no list of approved, censored, or banned books that can be provided. There is no head librarian for the district to manage a secondary review process. The burden is on librarians and teachers to use their professional judgment without any guarantee that the district will support their actions. In the absence of clear guidelines, staff have no choice but to protect their jobs by creating the most restrictive environment, which is book banning, without even being presented with a book challenge. We support parents' rights to choose what their kids read. But in other districts like McKinnney ISD, for example, opt-out versus opt-in policies keep books on shelves. The simple fact is, parents cannot have choice over what books their children are reading if the choices have already been removed from the shelves.
Thank you. Our 11th speaker is Carrie Mamantov. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Carrie Mamantov, I've lived here 15 years with two kids in the district. I spoke with many of the 700 people at the book fair, and these families are concerned about the confusion and complexity of the book policies. We've discovered there is no option for high school advanced learners to opt-in with parental waivers, so students can't currently opt-in to the most-read classics required for AP exams and college admissions essays. Middle schoolers, even with a parental consent in Skyward, still cannot check out young adult books if they haven't yet turned 13. That includes reading books like Percy Jackson or Refugee. And still, many families don't know about the parent choice form in Skyward. I request the board promptly provide all families additional details about the book removal process, a list of the weeded books, a list of removed books, and a list of books on the opt-in shelf. And tell families how their students can find those opt-in shelves. Communications should explain how we can ensure students are achieving a year's worth of growth when there are no librarians, teachers, or anyone assigned to take ownership of these changes. If we aren't offering differentiated learning, it's hurting all students.
Thank you. Our 12th speaker is Kimberly Davis. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I am a resident. This book banning policy is just one of the changes dismantling our destination district, destroying our reputation, and resulting in a loss of our designation as a top 100 place to work. We moved our youngest to GCISD after eight years in private school specifically for Aspire, Amanda Guthrie, and her teaching team. When parents opt-in to Aspire, they are placing their trust in teachers like her to align a standard curriculum to state, national, and gifted education standards, offer thought-provoking book choices, and guide higher-level thinking discussions. Limiting teachers who were hired specifically to think out of the box, who are now being restricted, is like hiring a coach for a state champion cross-country team and then later deciding they can only work out in a gym. Show our teachers you empathize with these unfair and frustrating burdens instead of threatening them to stay. Allow Ms. Guthrie to change careers without reprimand and offer her an apology to this award-winning teacher for changing the job that she was hired to teach.
Thank you. Our 13th speaker is Kimberly Phoenix. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I guess, 7th grade parent. Amanda Guthrie has been key to the success of the Aspire program at the high school level. In addition to winning several statewide awards, Ms. Guthrie is beloved by students, parents, and staff alike. She was voted as the favorite teacher by the entire GHS class of 22. She is the department leader for Aspire at GHS as well as the avid leader. She was instrumental in helping last year's Aspire graduating class get acceptances to Harvard, Brown, Caltech, Northwestern, and Princeton, among others. It is devastating to think that students will no longer be able to benefit from Ms. Guthrie. I have personally heard from 32 parents in the last 48 hours expressing concern over what is happening in the Aspire Academy. If we are standardizing our curriculum across all grade levels, restricting teachers' ability to answer student questions or discuss current events without prior approval, cutting administrative staff that is needed to provide that approval, disallowing books on recommended AP lists and running away highly-trained teachers familiar with the nature and academic needs of highly-gifted learners, all that we are left with for Aspire Academy is a checkmark on a transcript. And that is not what any of us signed up for. Do better.
Our 14th speaker is Heidi Hughes. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Hi, yes, I am a resident. I plan to be forwarding the board a portion of an email exchange between myself and the head of an English department at a well-respected private school in the DFW area. After a rigorous testing and selection process, I feel comfortable in saying that their students are similar to what you would find in our Aspire Academy. I asked this teacher to tell me what their 9th grade students are reading in English, and I was floored by their response. After your recent restrictions on teaching and book selections, our students are clearly now disadvantaged. Our curriculum now looks nothing like theirs. While our students are limited to one archaic book, their students have access to a list of titles and an untethered teacher. After... It's now become clear to many in the GT community that the Aspire Academy is now safe in name-only.
Thank you. Our 15th speaker is Catherine Parks. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I urge you to correct course. Thank you.
I'm Catherine Parks. I have two kids in this district, Casey, Kathy, Shannon, Tammy. I am concerned about guns in our classrooms because I know it is on the agenda in Keller and our extremist board majorities follow each other's heartless and reckless policies. If you ever do decide to go down that road, here are some preemptive questions that I have for all of you. Insurance. How much would our insurance premiums go up to insure any gun-filled schools? And then, too, trust. Why would we ever trust teachers with bullets and guns but not with books? Why would we trust them to be accurate sharpshooters but not to write their own lesson plans? We now have to opt-in so our kids can read in this district? Would we be able to opt-out from guns in our kids' classrooms? Why would guns ever have more protections than books in GCISD? I really hope that they never do and I hope we always continue to put books above bullets in our classroom. Thank you.
Our 16th speaker is Laura Lehman. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD. Moving on, our 17th speaker is Kathy Ives. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I am a GCISD parent. At this point, the damage done by this board has been done. Ms. Guthrie will not return regardless of what you vote to do tonight. The only reason to take away her license is to threaten other teachers not to leave. Have some courage and transparency and prove that we don't have to threaten our teachers to stay. Let her leave and invite her to come back anytime, just as you have done for others. Furthermore, the Aspire program is falling apart. Due to the board majority's recent actions, limiting the curriculum, limiting the Director of Advanced Academics position, and not allowing high school Aspire students to read books above level, it is now a subpar situation. Lastly, GCISD is no longer in the top 100 places to work for the first time in many years. These sad developments are your fault, Casey, Shannon, Tammy, and Kathy. Shame on you.
Our 18th speaker is Connor McGall. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I am a resident. I'm a student at Grapevine High School. Recently, three of my eight classes have been disrupted by the school board's decisions. First, my Calculus III class has a teacher who's only ever taught algebra and geometry because of unwise staff and budget decisions. So we're having to teach ourselves out of a textbook. Second, you killed my Latin class. What am I supposed to say when colleges question why I never took AP Latin? Finally, in my AP World History class, my teacher, Ms. Guthrie, who I might add was voted GHS's favorite teacher in recent years, leads in social studies and Aspire at GHS, and is an absolutely stellar teacher, one of my favorites, she was forced to leave the district by your policies, the way you have restricted curriculum to the bare minimum, reduced the number of support staff in advanced academics, and generally made it a miserable experience to teach in GCISD. Tammy, Kathy, Shannon, and Casey, you've defunded my education and that doesn't seem like a fiscally-wise education. This fiscally-wise decision, considering you're supposed to be supporting it. Thank you.
Our 19th speaker is Heidi McGall. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I am a resident. I have two students in this district. What Connor is experiencing is happening in schools all over this district. Students are sitting in empty classrooms. They're sitting in classrooms with long-term subs. They're sitting in classes with teachers who are not qualified to teach the subject. All because teachers and administrators don't want to come work here because of the policies that you put in place. And here's the thing, you don't answer to Glenn Story or Lee Wambsgans or anybody from Patriot Mobile or any of your constituents that don't even live here. You should be answering to and thinking about the students and employees of this district. And it's clear you're not thinking about either one of them. So my message is to the people at home watching this. You better vote these selfish, irresponsible people out of these seats or we're going to be dealing with these consequences for years to come.
Our 20th speaker is Valerie Kunitz. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I'm sorry. I am a resident and taxpayer. After four years of being a recipient, why is GCISD no longer one of the Dallas Morning News top 100 places to work? In April and May, one of this year's teachers, of this year, teachers started leaving, actually fleeing the district due to additional unnecessary work restrictions enforced by the new school board majority. Librarians were stripped of their proven multi-campus vetting process to fill the shelves with state and national award-winning books. Students and educators' voices were stifled for fear of indoctrination, as told by white Christian nationalist PACs. Indoctrination of what? Asking questions, researching, and collaboration to learn, grow, and expand their minds? Student success? Education became exclusive, resulting in students falling through the cracks, denied assessments, increased student headcount, thus classrooms opening partitions becoming more like study halls. Special education students...
Our 21st speaker is Michael Quinn. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
The loss of the top 100 places-to-work designation was not just a marketing thing, and the timing of the surveys back in May in no way absolves this board majority of any responsibility. CSCL was first publicly proposed for further review by our current board president back in April. Mention of a list of 30 activist teachers, that was in March. Book censorship, November 2021, and targeting the principal, July 2021, 15 months ago. Employees saw how things were trending and what the results of the election in May meant, and the surveys reflect that. I don't know why anyone would want to take abuse just to work here, and you don't get to call educators groomers and indoctrinators, then expect them to whistle while they work to try and educate your kids. The scary part of all this, the real cost in human capital, won't really be felt until May of next year, when staff who've had a year to make other plans really start leaving in droves, because now they can afford to. We support public education, and we are watching what you're doing, and elections have consequences. We'll see you in 2023.
Thank you. Our 22nd speaker is Beverly Mavis. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Beverly Mavis, Colleyville. Casey, Shannon, Kathy, and Tammy, all of you ran on some version of transparency matters, transparency creates trust. This summer, you passed a supposedly balanced budget, resulting in cuts to many programs and activities, along with staff positions, except that it wasn't, and everyone knew it. Now you want to take over $17.5 million from the general operating fund balance to pay for self-insurance at $1.5 million, claims and judgments at $1.5 million, major maintenance at $4 million. What exactly does that mean, and is it a coincidence that it matches the budget shortfall? And other academic initiatives at over $2.5 million? What does that even mean? Given that thousands of taxpayer dollars were spent on unprecedented self-promoting mailers and a community impact ad, and that the additional attorney hired to advise you has cost over $99,000 through August, the four of you appear neither fiscally responsible nor transparent. District taxpayers deserve to have detailed information on how our dollars are being spent.
Thank you. Our 23rd speaker is Hillary Benedetto. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Just a reminder, please respect one minute as we're trying to conduct our business tonight. Thank you.
My name is Hillary Benedetto, and I live in Grapevine. In this Thanksgiving season, as a Colleyville Heritage High School paraprofessional, I am thankful for our teachers educating students using superior content knowledge with limited resources and egregious CSCL policies, our staff who keep our library open because the head librarian's left due to new restrictive book policies. I'm thankful for our administrators and counselors who keep students and staff physically and mentally safe while understaffed because of the ridiculous balanced budget attempt. Our thankful for our fine arts teachers who consistently challenge talented students on the highest level artistically and creatively in a gun-free zone. Our athletics coaches who require team and individual excellence, including the first time in school history state-bound volleyball team. Our sped and clerical paras, as well as custodians and cafeteria workers who keep us organized, clean, and fed with only a 1% raise. Finally, I am thankful for the upcoming school board election on Saturday, May 6, 2023, when we vote for trustees who care about our district.
Our 24th speaker is Ian Kelly. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I'm a resident of GCISD. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. All of us share the desire to see academic achievement maximized for our students. During our last meeting, we saw up here in the front, national merit-commended scholars received top honors for their achievements. We learned about innovative dyslexia intervention, and we heard from Heritage Middle School students as they mastered note-taking and planning their studies. I am proud of our Aspire AP and I University Prep programs, and I desire to see us maximize participation in these capstone programs for academic excellence. One roadblock that I have experienced with my youngest in GCISD is the lack of a shared curriculum between campuses and even within teachers of the same campus. In order to prepare and advance student educational outcomes, we require a core, shared curriculum, offering a progressive ladder to students, as well as opportunities to meet the requirements of our advanced programs, without a consistency in...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our 25th speaker is David Gunderson. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Trustees. My name is David Gunderson. I am a resident and substitute teacher for GCISD. I'm here to call attention to something everyone already knows. Public school libraries are full of highly sexual, explicit, and obscene materials, and they have been for a while. I'd like to point you to one disturbing example. The graphic novel My Friend Dahmer at GHS is authentic to the true story of serial killer Jeffrey Dahmer. Those of us who need a little history lesson, Dahmer killed people, had sex, or masturbated himself around the corpses, and then mutilated the bodies. To our librarians, you have your work cut out for you. I don't even want to know how many more novels like this are still in our school libraries, but you will get through this, and it will be worth it, and we thank you for it. To our four conservative trustees, thank you for voting in the policy that enforced state law to remove obscene materials from our school libraries. To the three trustees who didn't, shame on you.
Thank you. Our 26th speaker is Tina Ferguson. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Hi, yes, I'm Tina, and I am in the district. I'm here to talk about cleaning up school libraries. I know this is an ongoing process of our librarians, and that's actively working to remove obscene materials from our schools. Some of these materials have been in our schools for years, meaning that my daughter, who graduated, has had access to them. One book that has been called to my attention is Identical, or, yeah, Identical. It contains explicit activities, including sexual assault and child molestation. This novel is quite sick. Here is an excerpt. "When Daddy finished, he burrowed his head into Callie's hair and wept, confused at his tears and the sticky stuff icing her hands. Still, Callie pleaded, 'Don't cry, Daddy. What is the matter? Did I not love you enough?'" You can find that on page 152. I shudder to think how long this book would have stayed in the libraries if our four brave conservative trustees hadn't voted in the policy to remove it. Parents, please be watchful of what your children read. I'm a big believer of garbage-in, garbage-out. Thank you, GCISD librarians, for removing this filth from our school libraries.
Thank you. Our 27th speaker is Anna Zimmerman. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I'm a resident of Grapevine. My name is Anna. I want to tell you a little bit about myself. I am a previous trustee for the Board of Trustees for Oakland Community College in Michigan, the largest community college in Michigan. We have $160 million budget. I want to impress upon you that you have an opportunity to elect or seek a superintendent. We had that opportunity, and that is a key role for the trustees to be involved in that process. I know that you love your community, and you're listening to the feedback that you're getting, but the key role for the trustees is to actually elect a or hire a superintendent. I know that you would do the right thing and be a part of this process, because you will hire, evaluate, and establish the salary of the superintendent, so please keep that in mind, stand strong, and I hope you guys do the right thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our 28th speaker is Patrick Design. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
My name is Patrick, and I am a resident of GCISD. Lived here for 34 years, all my kids went through the program under Dr. Ryan. I'm here to talk about academics for my grandkids, however. We've lived at GCISD for some time now, and while I love this district, I have to note that its academics have not been going in the right direction for at least 10 years. And while I'm encouraged that star scores have returned to pre-COVID levels, I still think GCISD has a long way to go before we return to academic excellence. Perhaps the most disturbing thing I've heard is that GCISD doesn't seem to have a curriculum. Fortunately, I've also heard that this is something you're actually building, and that all of the content will be aligned with the TEKS. It seems likely to me that this is a primary reason for GCISD's academics seem to be about 10 years behind. I'm hoping that after some of the social improprieties and corruption...
Our 29th speaker is Cheryl Guth. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I am a resident with a daughter at Silver Lake Elementary. It's our job as parents and educators to protect our kids and keep them safe. Just like we have policies in place to protect them against bullying and locks on the doors to protect them from harmful intruders, we have to protect their minds as well. I love the written word and how impactful that can be to teach our children and what books can do, but there are books in our district that are harmful, that contain pornography, and I don't want my daughter's mind expanded by these type of words. An example I'm going to tell you about is from a novel called Push. The book has sexually explicit excerpts, sexual assault, child molestation, abuse, graphic violence, and incest. The mother in this novel molests her own daughter and gives graphic examples of the touching and the feeling that takes place in that. I don't want my daughter to be impacted by these kind of words. I want to expand my little girl's mind in a pure way, not with this filth. This novel has no place in our district. Thank you to the librarians who are actively working to protect my child from these harmful materials, and thank you to the four trustees who voted to remove them.
Our 30th speaker is Jeff Hall. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Hello, my name is Jeff Hall. I am a resident of GCISD. Tonight, I'd like to tell you about GCISD parents, a group of parents I work with to affect positive change in our district. We serve, we're on dads' clubs and PTAs, we work concessions and coach sport teams, we email our principals and tell them good things we see their teachers do. We build floats for Christmas parades and chaperones at Sky Ranch. We meet with administrators to improve academics. We hold doors open at morning drop-off. We donate backpacks to kids in need. We go to parent book reviews and shack meetings. We nominate teachers for the Stars of GCISD Award. We give our time and money to our community. We serve. Our hearts are with our district. Our goal is to make the district better, but recently, we've been compared to ISIS and the Taliban. We've been labeled Tarant Taliban in Facebook posts. Worse, a member of the Grapevine Colleyville Education Foundation liked this and endorsed this post. We're not ISIS, we're not Taliban, we're concerned parents. Tomorrow, I'm going to write the Executive Board of PTAs and the Education...
Thank you. Our 31st speaker is Zach Penn. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
My name is Zach Penn. I am a resident. Tonight, addenda makes it clear that Canty Hanger is handling the investigation for I-Prep University. All the trustees had to have known the potential problems at I-University Prep, and that Canty Hanger would conduct the investigation. We have repeatedly had trustees say that they did not know why the board needed Canty Hanger. One obvious reason was that the investigation was that you had to know this. Some of you chose to say that you did not know, but you did. You misled us. This is not upholding your fiduciary responsibility. We've heard some trustees call for transparency and complain about the invoices for Canty Hanger being redacted. Deceitfulness is not the same, and is the same, excuse me, as fabricating the truth. Your position, you position yourselves for looking out for the best interests of the district. Your political posturing isn't fooling anyone. You should not be on our board, and the community deserves an apology. Thank you.
Our 32nd speaker is Lee Ives. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
My name is Lee. I am a parent. We are losing our teachers. The penalty for a teacher leaving mid-year is at the discretion of the school board. This law is wrong. We're losing teachers in part because we are losing administration and because our teachers are carrying the extra load of up to three positions without commensary pay or recognition. Then you set expectations with no guidance that creates a hostile environment. You can't expect people to stay in these conditions. We have a superintendent, CFO, and now three teachers that have left mid-year, and now you choose to file a complaint? Aspire is becoming just a name and a checkmark on a piece of paper. Teachers and students came to this district to be able to spread their wings. You have effectively clipped those wings. This should not be, this is not just one-off incident. I would give Tammy, Kathy, Shannon, and Casey, and I believe the majority of parents, would give them a vote of no confidence.
Our 33rd speaker is Faith Woodman. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
I am not a resident. I've recently learned that GCISD does not have an official or consistent curriculum. As a young adult who was part of the public school system just a few years ago, I can assure you that this lack of consistency truly only hurts students. I have been in classrooms where my education was affected by inconsistency such as this, and I've been in classrooms where my education was given a strong curriculum and the ability, and our teachers, the ability to teach it according to their skill and style. It was only in one of these situations does a student body have the ability to truly succeed at the highest level. These students deserve better. Let's set them up for success. I'd also like to report, since last month, when I spoke here on behalf of Turning Point USA, that we do have two chapters being started in our district, which is wonderful to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Our 34th speaker is Doug Hood. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
My name is Doug Hood. I live and teach within this district. It's heartwarming hearing parents come up and stand up for teachers like Amanda Guthrie, because she is an amazing person, she is an amazing teacher, and it's really sad that the environment in this district is so toxic that we have teachers like her leaving. I walk around the school, I talk to people. Teachers are not positive about what's going on. They are very down. There is no positivity in the schools because of what happens in this room. It's not happening. People are ready to leave, they're planning to leave, people are leaving. Teachers do not want to come to this district because the salary is so low, and they see what's happening on the news with the toxicity. It's not a favorable place to work, it is not a favorable place to be, and it's really ironic to me when I consider that this board publicly brags that they value and appreciate teachers, and they can't keep their own staff.
Thank you. Our 35th speaker is Mindy Russell. Please step to the microphone and state whether you're a resident of GCISD.
Yes, I am a resident. Like many, I am also a transplant to this area. 16 years ago, as my husband completed his military service, we had the opportunity to choose anywhere in the US to settle and raise our family. We looked at many places and chose this area specifically because of the quality of the school district. That choice paid off for our son, who is currently a sophomore at BYU, on an extremely competitive Heritage Academic Scholarship. He earned that scholarship because of the high academic standards in GCISD. I have a daughter with six years to go, and I am extremely concerned with the number of excellent teachers we are losing. When we lose our experienced teachers, we lose our schools, and when we lose our schools, we lose our status as a destination district. This board has brought us to this sad state with a lack of transparency, honesty, and its adoption of policies that discourage teachers and staff from wanting to work in GCISD. Casey, moms are watching, hundreds of moms. We see everything this board is doing, and the fact that gifted staff are leaving should be a red flag alert on every community member's radar.
Thank you. This concludes the public comment section of the meeting tonight.
All right, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Oh, this is Stella reading right here.
There you go, yeah.
Just a audit.
All right, we are back in open session at 8:22. First item on the report, reports of the superintendent is Act on Adoption of a Resolution Committing Fund Balance in accordance with Governmental Accounting Standards, Board Gatsby Statement 54.
Yes, this is an item that we have to do in front of the audit. And so I'll ask Dayanne to take us through this item, please.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. So as part of accounting rules, there are several different classifications or categories of the fund balance. And so tonight, we are asking you guys to approve a revision to those classifications. So this resolution does not change the total fund balance. It's just moving the fund balance from one category to another. Several years ago, we had committed by resolution about $5 million of the fund balance for future compensation. Well, since that time, we've provided that compensation adjustment to employees. And so we really just need to reclass that from committed down to unassigned. What this resolution will do is ensure that we meet our fund balance policy because our fund balance policy reads that the assigned and unassigned fund balance will be 20% of operating expenditures. And so by just reclassifying that, we're moving it down to unassigned. And we will meet that requirement. We would be at 21.3% of operating expenditures. And one thing about the commitment of fund balance is it can be committed by the board at any time or uncommitted at any time. We do have several amounts in our committed fund balance for, you know, self-insurance. If we were to have a huge, you know, we're self-insured with our workers' comp. If we were to have a huge claim, that we would just commit that fund balance for that. Those amounts have been the same for several years. Those have not changed. So that's just kind of a standard practice to have a portion of your fund balance committed for self-insurance claims or any other kind of claims and judgment that we may have. Or if we were to have any, you know, major maintenance that would need to come from fund balance.
All right. Thank you, Dayanne. The recommendations for the board trustees to approve the resolution committing fund balance, fund balances in accordance with Gatsby 54 regulations as attached. Do we have a recommendation? Do we have a motion? Becky?
I move with Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Do we have a second? Tammy, seconds? Any comments or discussion? The only comment I have, just real quick. So said another way, this is an audit adjustment that was recommended so we can meet our local policy.
Yes.
And then the reason we are uncommitting this, sorry, the reason we're taking a committed amount of $5 million to the uncommitted is because it needs to be available for use and be unrestricted. And some of that would have been derived because we ran losses. We ran a $2 million loss and a $7 million loss. So that puts our threshold down below. So to do this, to get the threshold back up, we have to uncommit it.
We committed it for compensation adjustments, which happened. So that was part of what hit fund balance. And so now we need to replenish that unassigned fund balance for those compensation adjustments. Yes.
So then said another way, had we not ran losses, we wouldn't even have to.
Call the question.
We would have another had to, excuse me?
I call the question.
Do you have a second? Jorge, seconds? Do we want to call the question? All those in favor to call the question? Three? All those opposed? Motion fails? So basically, because we had losses, though, had we not had losses, we wouldn't have had to even unrestrict this.
That is accurate. Yes.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments, questions? Shannon?
So two months ago, when you stood up here, you told us, because you specifically said that that we met our fund balance, the 20% or whatever the policy was. And so I'm just curious as to what's happened in the last two months.
Are you talking about, I don't remember that. Was that part of the update for the?
You specifically mentioned it. Somebody had asked a question. You specifically mentioned it. So I'm just curious as to what's happened in the last two months.
Well, once we got into the audit process and you look at the categories, I probably was just saying overall the fund balance. But as we got into the audit and started looking at the different categories, and once everything was finalized and I, we actually knew what that deficit was going to be, then we made this adjustment to meet our policy.
So can we sustain year over year a $7 million loss, which was last year, a $2 million loss the year before? We will probably be at a $6 million loss this year. Can we sustain that year over year?
No, we cannot.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Dayanne, does the budget currently reflect a $6 million loss?
The current budget that was approved? No, it does not.
Okay, so how are we going to come up with a $6 million loss? Does that mean the budget is actually not showing the full picture of what the projected expenses of the district are going to be? Why, who?
This line of questions is in order. We need to stick to the adoption of this resolution under Gatsby Statement 54.
Okay, guess we have a $6 million loss we need to prepare for. So I'm glad we're doing this with fund balance.
So thank you. All those in favor? Motion passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is Act on a 2021, 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, this is the annual comprehensive financial report, or the audit as it's known. And I'll turn it over to Dayanne to introduce our auditor.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Tonight, we have John Manning here. He is with Patillo, Brown &amp; Hill. And he is going to present the audit report.
For the trustees, thank you for letting us be here, Dan. Could you see? Sorry. Okay. Well, what you should have in front of you is an ACFR, what we call an Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. That's what I'm going to be reading from tonight. And I'm going to keep the discussion brief. This is about 160-page document. And I know y'all have a long agenda and I'm just going to go over a lot of the highlights. So if you look at page one and don't get nervous, that doesn't mean I'm going to go through every one. The page one is actually the independent auditors report. This is what we were hired by the board and the district to do. It's to render an opinion on the financial statements of Grapevine Colleyville ISD as of June 30, 2022. And that's what we're doing. We're offering an opinion here and it's called an unmodified opinion, meaning we did not have to modify our opinion for any gap departures. A gap departure is, for instance, if you're not keeping track of your capital assets or if you're not keeping up with accounting standards where your financials are misleading or wrong, then we have to modify the opinion for that. This is the highest level of assurance that we can offer. If you get anything less than this on your first rating, you have a problem or you get subtracted points from what your overall score should be. So although this is only, what, a three-page document, it's one of the things that when you're going out for bonds, they look at it, granters look at it, TEA looks at it. And this isn't just us. This isn't just finance. This is the board. This is the whole district that has something to do with having an unmodified opinion. Because you can have all the controls and everything you want, but if people don't follow them, then it's pointless. So I just wanted to go over that you do have an unmodified opinion and that that is a team effort, not just me saying that it's that. Starting on page four, I'm not going to spend a lot of time here, but this is the management's discussion and analysis. This is actually something that they added several years ago that's actually pretty good. It's for those of us that don't do what I do or what Dayanne does all day. It kind of takes the years finances and breaks them down into words. It's also the only part anymore, any place in the report anymore that has comparative data, which we find super helpful. So you can see trends on, okay, this number went way up over last year. What happened? So if you're not well-versed in financials and just want a quick overview of what happened, that is a place that I would commonly direct your attention to. Starting on page 12, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this part of the financials because I think it's better served at a latter part. If you look here on page 12, there's two columns. If you looked at last year's report, there was only one and I'll explain why. Column one is the entire district put into one column. So that's all of your grants, debt service, general fund, everything, plus your capital assets, plus all of your long-term debt. That's why we call it governmental activities. You can also see now there's a new column called business-type activities. And if you recall, USDA asked that you guys move your high school food operations into what we call an enterprise fund or a for-profit type of reporting model. This is the first year that that directive was handed down. So this is the first year that that has shown up here. So you can still see, because it's so small, those numbers are barely material. But we have to present them that way in accordance with what they wanted. One thing that I'd like to point out here is that I'm going to go over the financials a little bit more in just a second. But one thing I'd like to point out down here is that your overall net position in both categories is positive. Although the unrestricted is a deficit balance, and if you'll remember, several years ago, we had to start putting on the unfunded portion of pensions and the TRS care OPEB liabilities. So those are liabilities that you guys will never have to pay, but they have to be recorded here. They used to be in the notes. Now they have to be recorded. So that's essentially just putting a liability on with no offset. So that just goes straight to equity. Typically, if you issue a bond, that gets offset with an asset and the asset gets depreciated. You pay the bond off and they level out with each other. So that's why those numbers are deficit. And if you pull up any district in the state, they all look like that because those pension liabilities that they're. Starting on page 15 and 16, this is a little bit more of what everybody's used to. I like to spend more time here. This is, when y'all do your budgeting, I heard y'all talk about budgeting earlier. These are what we call your major funds or the funds that met the criteria to be presented individually. They're over there on page 15. That's your general fund, your debt service fund, your capital projects fund. The district ended this year with a little over $266 million of cash and cash equivalents, unpaid property taxes of about 6.5 million. One thing that if you look here, other than the foundation accrual, there's not a lot of risk here when you look at this balance sheet. I mean, that big cash number, yes, it's big. But we send confirmations to third parties that say, yes, this is how much cash the district has. So we're not just relying on the district saying, hey, this is how much we have. We're actually going out, doing audit procedures and making sure that those amounts were actually there. If you look at some of your big unearned revenue, that's your money that's due back to the state for property taxes. And then you have your accounts payable, which is essentially services that were rendered prior to your end but not paid for until after. Again, when you look at this balance sheet, just not a whole lot of risk there. One thing I'd like to point out. One thing I'd like to point out is if you go to the bottom there, all the fund balances are positive, and there's nothing in here, you know, even though this is the first year that we've done the audit, we went back and looked at four or five years of, of financials. And in looking at this, there, there's nothing here that we see that's trending in a direction. Like, we don't think your cash balances are too low, or we don't think your unpaid property taxes are too high. Things are looking like they should, which is good. So if you look over on page 18 and 19, this is a summary of your revenues and expenditures for the year. Essentially, 12 months of revenues and expenses. Predominantly, like we always talk about, the, the major driver there is property taxes. That's up in your local revenue number. State program revenues were about 21 million, and federal government revenues were about almost 16 million this year. Good thing is, even with the deficit in the fund balance, or having a loss this year, it's still right at $50 million, which is very good. That, you know, 50 million on 200 million of expenditures, it's about a core year reserve. So anything over three and a half months is considered really good by GFLA. Debt service fund balance is 72 million, and your capital projects is about 65 million. You'll see that capital projects continue to dwindle as you continue to turn that bond money into buildings and into the projects that those things were designed for. Your other funds there, over on page 19, that's all of your other things. That's your non-high school, school lunch, that's IDAB, that's Title I, that's ESER, that's all of your, your grants and those type of things. Looking over on page 52, a big chunk I just didn't go over were the notes. They're required to have a full set of financials. They're about 50 pages. There's a lot of good information in there as well, but we could spend all day on those. One thing I'd like to point out here on page 52 is your budget to actual. On $192 million of actual revenue, you were off-budget by a little, by about a million dollars. And on expenditures, you stayed under. And one of the things that TEA is very mindful of is in any of your functions, if you go over, they send you an astygram and saying, hey, you're not supposed to go over in, in those different functions. So we like to see that, because that means that if there's things that are going on where there's budget amendments that need to be done, we can see that the district is doing them, and their budget policies are, are working there. So, one thing I'd like to point out, just very briefly, that was one of the highlights this year, is if you look on page 54, I'm not going to get into a knee-deep discussion, because again, we could be here all night. But one thing that I'd like to point out is, your pension liability went from about 40.3 million down to 19.5. And that is really good, but remember, these are always a year behind. So this was based on August 31st of 2021. And if you remember back then, the stock market was doing really good. So the performance of the assets that are being held by TRS did really well. That's why that liability came down. We'll probably see the flip side this year, after this year's market. Depending on what happens, we should see that liability come back up some. Like I said, starting on page 60, 62, as I mentioned, these are all of your combining funds. I'm not going to spend a lot of time here, some of the key things here, you're, if you remember, because of COVID, a lot of the school, well, all school districts were allotted ESER money. Those things are shown here. Also, starting on page 82, or 81, is the statistical section. I'm not going to spend time here, but I do want to direct your attention. If you haven't ever looked through here, this is really a neat thing. It's got 10-year trend information of everything that's kind of went on financially at the district. So you can go back and look at 10 years ago and see how much the district has grown, how many different facilities they have now, how many more employees they have. It just shows how much growth that the district has had. Also, starting back on page 121, because the district spent over $750,000 of federal funds, this year you came in at about 14.5. We have to do our audit under what's called Uniform Grant Guidance, which means we have to select some federal grants and look at them with compliance with the OMB circular, where they go through and say, okay, for food service, you can't do this with this money. You have to file these reports and do all these things. And so this year, you actually had three programs that we tested, and we did not have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses to report on those, which is really good. We've seen districts where we have a lot of findings there, because there are a lot of turnover in things. And in those federal programs, the regulations are immense, and the documentation is excruciating. So everybody that we dealt with when it came to grants was extremely friendly, competent, and experienced. And so I think that's one of the reasons why that led to no findings. And I think if you can ask the staff, it was not from lack of trying. I mean, we, we have to pull at least 40 invoices from each one of those programs, and that includes payroll and non-payroll. So we did a lot of testing on those federal programs. Also, we did a lot of control work, where we go in and we talk to members about how their controls are set up. Then we also take test transactions and make sure that those controls are functioning like they say they are. And we did not have any control weaknesses there. So again, we don't look at every single control, we don't look at every single transactions, but the ones that we did look at, looked very good. And so with that, I'll turn it over to you guys, if you have any questions. I do want to thank Diane and her staff, that's predominantly who we work with. But we worked with people in HR, we worked with people in food service, we worked with people in grants, and we got a lot of cooperation, and we really appreciate it.
All right, we'll have Dr. Ryan read the recommendation.
Yeah, thank you. The recommendations for the board trustees to approve the 2021-2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Have a recommendation, do we have a motion? Coley?
I make a motion, we approve Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? My only comment is, oh, go ahead, Cole.
It's always so good to hear that Diane's so wonderful to work with. We're going to miss her next year.
We will tip.
Big kudos to Christie Drilling. Is Christie still here?
Yes.
This is Christie's baby, she does a lot of work on this.
Thank you.
I thought I said the finest word, I'm sorry, I should have, she, she's here, I should have mentioned her by name.
I just have to name her by name, she's the queen.
I should have, I sat with her for the last two hours.
Only comment is, good job. Thanks for getting, Diane, thanks for getting all my questions answered. It was very thorough. Patillo and Brown, good work.
Thank you.
Y'all are a very reputable firm, so I was, I was glad to have you guys do this.
Appreciate being served.
That's all I have, so all, all those in favor, show of hands? Motion passes seven zero. The next item on the agenda is Act on the 2023-2024 School Year Budget Planning Calendar.
All right, so Diane, can you take us through the budget planning calendar for next year's budget, please?
Thank you. So yes, every November, we go ahead, go ahead and have the board approve the budget planning calendar. We usually typically start the budget planning process in January, and this calendar is just to make sure that we meet all of those required deadlines that, on those date requirements that the law requires. So that's, we're just asking you guys to go ahead and approve that, so we can get started on the budget process.
Thank you, Diane. And the recommendations for the board trustees to approve the 2023-24 School Year Budget Planning Calendar.
Have a recommendation, do we have a motion? Kathy?
I make a motion to accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Have a second, Jorge, seconds? Any discussion? Becky?
Yeah, Diane, I noticed we do have the budget work session with the District Excellence Committee, but are we still involving the Budget and Finance Committee, or did that committee end?
No, we, we are continuing that work with the committee.
Okay. Okay.
Coley?
Since we won't have our fearless leader here for this budget planning calendar, what is the plan staffing-wise to make sure we are doing this on time?
So we are working, in fact, at a meeting today with a potential interim CFO to be able to step in and work with Diane and her team in a transition, and then take the reins for a period of time until we can post. And we're also working with somebody to try to help us bring candidates for this, for the permanent CFO's job.
All, all those in favor? Show of hands? Motion passes seven oh. Next item on the agenda is Act on Doing, on a donation from the BSPTA.
Yes, the Bransford PTA is donating an interactive outdoor ground display on the basketball and four square courts. These are going to replace the worn art and activities currently on the basketball court. So I'll get to the recommendation. The recommendations for the board trustees to accept the donation of an interactive outdoor ground display valued at $24,776 from the Bransford Elementary PTA.
Recommendation, do we have a motion? Coley?
I make a motion that we approve Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Tammy, second?
I'll second.
Any discussion, comments? Coley?
So I got to go to the best party last year, and it was amazing. I don't know how much money they raised, but they're getting to do amazing things with those funds. So thank you so much to the BSPTA for all the efforts that they're doing to make that a great place to learn.
All those in favor? Show of hands? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much, BSPTA, we're very grateful for your donation. Next item on the agenda is Act on the Donation from the Cannon PTA.
Yes, Cannon PTA is donating two shade structures to be installed in the playground areas, and they're going to reduce the sun exposure to students and staff during recess and reduce the heat generated by the dark surface material. The value is 30, just over $36,000. So the recommendations for the board trustees to accept the donation of two shade structures valued at, valued at $36,250 from the Cannon Elementary PTA.
We have a recommendation, do we have a motion? Coley?
I make a motion to accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Kathy, second?
I'll second.
All right. Any, any comments? Becky?
Yeah, Paula, do we, I mean, we keep putting these on the back of the PTA to, to raise the money for these things. And, I mean, we have pretty hot sun. Do we have an idea of how many more playgrounds don't have shade structures but could probably need them? I mean, some of them, there's at least some shade kind of around. But I'm, I'm just concerned that, you know, this item or items like this, really probably, and this is something I think to consider in the next bond, if we're going to be putting the playgrounds out there, but they're not really usable because they all need shade, and the PTAs are all having to raise money to put the shade structures up, I don't know why that's not part of the playground construction in the first place. And so, do we know how many more playgrounds don't have shade and need it?
No, I, I don't have that number in front of me, but we can get that in our report this week.
Okay, yeah, I, I think that's something we really need to consider going forward, because it's just not fair to say, hey, have a nice playground, but, you know, you're going to burn your fanny going down the slide. And then the PTA has got to come up with, you know, $36,000. That is a lot of, that's a lot of fundraising there. So thank you, I look forward to that.
All those in favor of the motion? Motion passes seven zero. Once again, thank you, Cannon PTA for their donation, we're very grateful. Next item on the agenda is Act on a Change to Board Policy FFAC Local Wellness and Health Services, Medical Treatment Through Opioid Antagonist Medication. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, this item is asking the board to change board policy because, similar to administering asthma medication, epinephrine, or making use of an automated external defibrillator, the district is recommending the, allowing the administration of opioid antagonistic medicine, which allows the district to administer an opioid antagonist to a person experiencing an opioid-related drug overdose. The Director of Health Services has prepared training for the district personnel, notice appearance, and administrative regulation. And she's also located a program that will provide the medication to the district at no cost. Now, the recommendations for the board trustees to approve the revisions to Board Policy FFAC Local regarding the administration of opioid antagonistic medicine.
I have a recommendation, do I have a motion?
I have a question first. Dr. Ryan, do we have?
We're going to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Make a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Ryan's recommendation.
Second by Becky, all right. Tammy, questions?
Yes, do we have those in school now? Do the resource officers have them, or are they available?
To my knowledge, we do not have those in, in our schools at this point.
Okay, and none of the resource officers or anyone has them? So this will change that, correct?
I would assume that emergency, ambulance personnel, and those kinds of folks might have that. I'm not, I'm assuming that, so I'm not, don't know for sure. But this would allow the school nurse to have that on campus.
Okay, so would the nurse, we, we don't know exactly whom, or will she be the only one that has it? Or do you not know that?
Well, you have to be trained, and, and you have to be a medical, a licensed medical person to be able to do this. And so, yeah, she'd be the only, that, that nurse would be the, the person that would be there to, licensed to be able to, to deal with that.
Okay.
Paula, is that right? Is that the right answer?
Yes, sir, I believe that's correct.
All right, just want to make sure.
I'll just say that I attended a SHAC meeting in the spring, where they presented, where we had a presenter talk about how essential having this in our nurses' office is for our students, and not that we've had a circumstance, we've had, you know, this, the potential for an, for an overdose for these particular drugs is substantial. So it's, you know, similarly to our EpiPins that we have for people with allergies, these medications can save a life in a minute. And so I'm encouraging you.
All right, all those in favor? Oh, thank you.
So, do we know what this is going to run? Because I, I remember when the state mandated that we had to have the EpiPins. You know, I, I carry an EpiPen myself, and so I know the costs on those things skyrocketed. And so what, do we know what kind of cost we're looking at? Especially because since they've got to be, per the policy here, they've either got to be administered by a nurse or someone who's been trained. And so if we're going to have this, I think it's pretty essential to make sure that we've always got somebody on campus available to use it. But I was also curious as to what, how expensive this is.
Well, my understanding from the director is that she has a program in place that is going to provide the medication to the district, so that is not a cost to the district.
That's really good news. And then, I had another question. I'm assuming it's going to be stored in the nurse's office then, like with the, with the EpiPen?
I would anticipate that, yes.
Okay, and then another question that I did have, submitted this earlier, and the answer was just a little bit vague. How, I mean, we, we get the annual drug report to the board. Are, are we seeing a lot of instances where, I mean, what, what, what kind of incident of this are we actually seeing here? How many times have we called for, you know, 911, because we've got to get this administered, since we don't currently have it? I'm, I'm just curious as to, you know, do we, do we have an issue developing in the district that wasn't there before?
We don't know of any that have been reported at this point. We just want to make sure that because this seems to be gaining in prevalence, we want to be prepared if, if something like that does happen at one of our schools.
All those in favor? Show of hands? Motion passes seven zero. Yeah, I think it's a great policy. Next item on the agenda, elementary and secondary school emergency relief ESER 2 and 3 financial update. Dr. Ryan?
Yeah, so Diane's going to take us through the update of the federal funds from ESER 2 and 3.
Okay, so this is our quarterly financial report on the two ESER funds that we have. Just as a reminder, we have received two grants, ESER 2 and ESER 3. The ESER 2 grant was the allocation that was used to offset the loss of state funding for the 2021 school year. And the total allocation was $4,67,788. These funds are available through September 30th of 2024. The ESER 3 allocation was the larger amount at $9,138,625. And it also is available through. The S R three allocation was the larger amount at $9,138,625, and it also is available through September of 2024. As part of, there were a lot of guidelines on forming needs assessment with this money. And one of the first things that was required was as to receive stakeholder feedback on what these funds would be used for. And so just as a reminder, the district worked with principals, department leaders, district excellence committee, and actually got some student voice on there as well. We had to form an S R innovation team. That first couple of meetings was just prioritizing those needs and just coming up with the strategies for those. And then in June of, or July of 2021 was when we submitted our application to T E A. And then one of the requirements is that the S R innovation team meet on a semi-annual basis. And so we have started holding those meetings in June and December of each year. So we had one last June to kind of talk about the plans for the 2223 school year. And then we will have another one, I believe it's on December 15th, where we will just update the S R innovation team on kind of where we are with our plans for the current school year. Just a reminder, these are the strategies that were identified during that stakeholder process, and those remain in place. You can see there on the right. So this slide summarizes the expenditures for the S R two grant. All of these expenditures have been in payroll. And, you know, I mentioned that this was the grant that the state supplanted in 2021. And so that amount was 2.4 million. And that left a balance that we used, if you recall, last December, we gave a one-time retention payment to all employees. So that was about $950,000. And then we also gave retention payments to auxiliary staff for April and July. And that just leaves an unspent budget of $163,000. If you see page 227 in your agenda packet, I provided the summary of these expenditures by the various T E A reporting codes. Now here is the slide that summarizes expenditures for S R three, and it's broken out by payroll, contracted services, supplies and materials, and other. We've spent approximately 3.7 million. And this is, these expenditures are cumulative from the very beginning of the grant. So the unspent budget is about 5.4 million. So in total, we've spent about 40.92% of the allocation. You can see there that a large portion of this allocation is in payroll. We have a few funds set aside for tutoring. If you look in your packet, I also did provide the details of the positions that we are currently funding with the S R three. And then I also provided details of the non-payroll expenditures that list everything, list the vendor, the check number, and the P O number. So this slide just indicates the number of physicians that I just mentioned that we have budgeted in S R three. Currently, seven of these positions are vacant. One note on that very bottom line there, we are using the S R three funds to help offset costs in the general operating budget, which that is an allowable use of S R. It falls under the continuing to employ existing staff. And one reason we just did it through the custodial was it was a very simple function 51, and it didn't impact any of the program intent codes because, you know, we're required to spend so much in the various program intent codes. And so this is one way, some of the other districts in, in the state that did this type of, had this type of use for the funds, that was one of the suggestions, doing, you know, either that or like even utilities. But I felt like it was more in line with that allowable use of continuing to employ existing staff. And so that's why we chose to do that. That's it.
Thank you, Diane. Any comments, questions? Becky?
Yeah, so Diane, wow, I guess I did not remember or realize that we were funding 83 custodian positions on money that goes away at the end of the 24 school year.
So it, what, during the budget process, it was not, you know, finalized that that's the way we would use the money, but it was discussed. We would be one-time use of S R money to help offset general operating costs in the amount of 2.4 million.
Okay, so 2.4 mil that goes away at the end of the 24 school year. So I did notice that those seven positions that are open there, and those are primarily in attempting to reduce class size, special ed, and parental engagement. My, my question that I sent in was if we don't hire those positions, which it's already mid-November, then, then those positions that are focused on reducing class size, special ed, and parent engagement, we can use that money again next year?
It will just roll.
Provided we can find somebody to actually take those positions.
Yes, it will just roll into the next year, and we will probably go through another needs assessment and kind of look at, you know, what positions we currently have, which ones we really need to keep, you know, kind of go through that process once the year ends and we have, we know what the amount that's going to roll over. And one thing I do want to correct on, you said that money is going away in '24. Honestly, that was just for this current budget year, that 2.4 million. That was one use of, of money for this current fiscal year.
Okay, so we don't have that in place for this upcoming budget?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, no.
The calendar that we just passed.
Yep.
Okay, okay, that's good to know. So, wow, okay. As I'm wrapping my head around that number, we can, since the, the money for these seven unfilled positions, we can roll it into next year. We may or may not still need to be focusing on, I mean, parent engagement, class sizes bed, probably so. But in any event, if we still have positions that we're still unable to fill, even though we found the need for those, when we get to the end, close to the end of '23, '24, can we at least repurpose that money to do like retention bonuses or something?
Yes, we can repurpose the money, even, even if we wanted to, you know, say we had $60,000 left at the end of the year, we could even move some expenditures from the general operating over there because that is an allowable use of funds to, to supplant.
Okay, so there is, so, so in a sense, it is use it or lose it because it is going to go away, but we should be able to find a way to use up all of the money.
We will use every dime.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Colleen?
Was there a deadline for when we need to spend that by?
It is available through September of '24.
All right, next item on the agenda is review the timeline for the superintendent search.
Good evening, President Ford and members of the board. My name is Dr. Debbie Cano, and I'm with the Law Firm of Lisa Crass. I'm excited to give you an update tonight on the process. I'll be working directly with Rhonda Crass and Mike Leeser to assist the board in finding its next superintendent. Our next step in this process is to meet with you all and to establish a timeline and to determine how much input the board wants and, and desires to obtain from staff, from students, from parents, the community, and key stakeholders. The board will work directly with myself and with Rhonda to schedule a board meeting specifically in the coming weeks to accomplish those two tasks. Once that timeline has been established, we'll begin the process of holding a variety of meetings with staff, students, parents, community members, to obtain their input. And the purpose for that is so that we can begin to coalesce and collect these characteristics that your stakeholders in the community believe are essential in your next superintendent. We'll also provide a survey for individuals who are interested so that they can contribute and also provide feedback to you, the board, and give you some insight as well concerning what they deem as most important and critical in your next superintendent. I thank you again for giving me this opportunity tonight. It was a pleasure to meet with you last week. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Just one quick comment. I, I did forward on the timeline that we actually have already met, so I forwarded that on to Rhonda earlier. So we do have that. So yeah, I think next steps is please look at your emails, get back on a time within the next couple of weeks, or a variety of them, and then we'll just make things happen. So thank you very much for.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment? All right, moving on. Next item, review the 2022, 2023 board planning calendar.
Yes, we just had one change from November to December. The graduate fine and AP exam results will be provided in, in December.
All right, next item, request for board reports, requests for reports to the board. Becky?
Yeah, my understanding is that the Dallas Morning News has a report available, and since we did not make the list this year, I would like us to get that report and see what we can glean out of that, that can help us improve going forward.
Do we have a motion?
Need to be a motion?
Yeah, it's an action item.
Request for reports to the board is an action item?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I move that we get the report from the Dallas Morning News to get the results of the top 100.
One second. More than a second. Any comments? Colleen?
So I understand that there might be a cost associated with getting that report if, if, so I'd just like to understand better what that cost is, and if there's an opportunity to dig, what our other options are into digging into the data that kept us from being on that list.
There is a cost associated with that. It's around $25,000 to receive the results of the surveys. And so that's the cost. And the, it was available to us in the spring semester. I'm sure it could still be available to us. We do have an employee engagement survey that we do every year. We're doing that at the end of January. And so each year we have trending results on our Gallup survey, and we'll do that again in January.
Would those results align with what we could get from the Dallas Morning News? Would that great, do they ask similar questions to the Great Place to Work survey?
They ask some of the same questions, they do. I wouldn't say that it's similar. We've never purchased the results of the survey. So Dallas Morning News will contact me to say, you've been nominated, would, and would you like to participate? And we do. And so we would send the survey to our staff, and then they would email me to say, congratulations, you've won. And this year, they told us we did not become a part of that list. So we've never purchased the results of that comprehensive survey.
Did they provide, other than just you're not on the list, they provided no other feedback?
There was one year when we, there was a very small amount, that they, they applied some pressure, and I said, listen, I only have X amount left in the budget. And they said, well, for X amount, we can give you this much, this much. And they did give me a very, very high overview. And it didn't give me any detail to really how I, how the staff was feeling.
And my last question would be, do 100% of staff take the survey, or is it like?
No, I believe we had an 80, 75 to 80% participation rate.
I've got a question. When do we get the results of that? When did we get notified?
We take it, we took it this year, and we have to take it sometime. They give us a window, it's a pretty large window. I believe we took it in the first of May, first of July, we received that information.
So this was based on last year?
Correct.
So just so I understand, I'm sorry. So we took, the survey was taken at the beginning of May, and we found out in June?
End of June, first of July, yes.
Is when we found out?
Yes.
That we were not on the list?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Becky?
So Gemma, not knowing that there was that high of a cost associated with this, is there some kind of middle ground then between whatever survey it is that we're sending out versus the 25,000 for this? Because, I mean, that's a pretty big hit to go four years in a row and have 80% of our employees are apparently, what, what's the response rate to, to our survey?
We have a little bit higher to our Gallup Employee Engagement Survey.
And what's the cost of that?
So we have a lot of services with Gallup. We do the teacher insight, the principal insight, the engagement survey. I'd have to look at the contract. I believe we had a, have a three-year contract with Gallup for those services.
So we're still in that right now?
We are. Gallup has a great, they have great data. I would encourage us to really look more in depth into what our teachers are telling us through that because we have some trending data about their engagement. We also have open-ended questions.
I guess I just, I guess I just have some concerns about using only one data source, especially since, you know, we've got positions that are going begging. Seven on the S R alone, but we've got positions that we're not able to fill. And this seems to be, this year in particular, a huge issue. I, I know we had some issues with a core, a core class over at Heritage in getting that position filled with an accredited, properly trained teacher. And to hear students coming up saying, you know, I'm in this high-level class and I don't seem to be getting that kind of instruction, I, I think maybe we need some more information. Maybe it doesn't need to cost $25,000, but I, I, I would see what you could get out of the Dallas Morning News because to go, speaking of trends, four years and then boom, I, I think, I think we need some, we need some information. We need, we need more than one data point to help us stop this tide of, of teachers leaving, of staff leaving, and then to be able to fill the positions that we have, we, we've got to have more data.
Becky, can you circle back to the report that we're discussing and not standing?
Yeah, I just said, we've got to have more data here. So I'm, I'm happy to withdraw my motion, given the cost of this thing, but I, I'd like us to explore more than one way to skin this cat and get some information that, that we need.
Well, we'll need a second to rescind your motion. Do I have a second?
I have a question.
Sorry, you have a question?
Did any school district make the top 100?
No, I believe there were three last year. We were one of the three, but this year there were no school districts on the list.
Thank you.
So this was done by the Dallas Morning News, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And they charged to get information?
They didn't charge us to do the survey. The survey was free.
Right.
So the Dallas Morning News contracts with a survey company. It's called InnerGage. And so InnerGage will give everyone the survey, and then, yes, it does cost to get.
Right, so.
To get the results, they charge, yeah.
Yeah, they charge money. It's just like if you get these magazines that have top docs and all this kind of stuff in them, you have to basically pay to get there. And it sounds to me like that's exactly what they're trying to do here. So that's my take on it. Because we have a great place for people to work, and they love working here.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind.
You second, Shannon? All those in favor of rescinding the motion? Passes seven oh. All right, moving on to the consent.
I just want to congratulate Gemma because those are really high survey participation rates, 80, 12% and 90%.
Yes.
That's really high.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Our, our staff, they, you know, we have student voice, and when that took off, teacher voice took off also, so they, they have opinions and they're going to tell us.
That's good. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. All those in favor, anyone have any items they want to pull?
I want to pull, I want to pull item H.
Okay. All those in favor of passing the consent agenda besides?
I'd, I'd like. I'd like to pull an item also. I'd like.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I would like to pull item D.
All those in favor of the consent agenda passing except for items D and H, show of hands?
A motion?
A motion.
Sorry, yeah, you're right. Motion. Cole?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda except for G and H.
D and H. So I'll second. All those in favor? All those items pass except for D and H. First item we will discuss is item D. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, item D are the budget amendments from November of '22. The recommendations for the board trustees to approve the budget amendments as presented.
Have a recommendation, have a motion? I'm sorry. Actually, no, we'll need a motion. Do we have a motion on this? Cole?
I'm making, make a motion to approve Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
I have a second. Four seconds. Any comments, discussion? Becky?
Yeah, so, you know, we made a commitment. I believe there was an understanding that budget amendments would be brought before the board for discussion and transparency. So Diane, can you walk us through what we're looking at here?
Yes. Yes, so this report provides any amendments that move budget between the function, various function levels. When we, you know, put the budget together in the spring, the year before. Sometimes there are needs to move the budget to the different function areas to make sure that the expenditures are coded correctly. Also on this report is if we have an amendment that impacts revenues and expenditures. And so what this report reflects is we are setting up some budget for an additional extended day program site aid at Bear Creek because we have the students to, to do that. And so we need to increase the revenue. That will help offset, will cover the cost of the, that additional aid. Now, I will say, last month on the report, it was put as 1,400 and it should have been 14,000. So that's why you see a negative 1,400 and where we fixed it and put the 14,000. So it is truly an offset. It's just the revenue and the expenditure. Same thing right below that 14,000, there's 11,500. It is the same type thing. We have a summer bridge program that we collect funds from the students to pay for the teacher to conduct that. And so we're just setting up the budget for that revenue and the expenditures for that program.
Tammy? Thank you, Diane. So my understanding is these, these items we put on the consent agenda are just routine business items?
Yes, that's what we've typically, how we've handled it now. If it's, if it's an amendment that impacts fund balance, that's what we would typically put on an.
What we've done, historically speaking, routine business decisions, you just put on the consent agenda and you move on.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of item, Becky?
I have one more question. So have we already advertised that extended day position?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And are we going to be able to fill it?
I'll have to look and see when we posted it and how many applicants we have.
Okay. All right, thanks.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, show of hands? I, sorry, Shannon, passes 7-0. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item H. Dr. Ryan?
This item H is to consider finding teacher's resignation after the school year began was without good cause and authorizing the complaint to the State Board of Educator Certification for abandonment of the contract. I'll ask Gemma to take us through this item.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Ryan. So when we have an educator that resigns in the middle of the year, we always first look for a replacement. We have 2,000 employees and we know that many educators have many different things that happen. And so people are going to leave from time to time. When we have educators who are on a Chapter 21 contract, they sign that contract in the spring promising to stay for the remainder of the next school year. And so when we look at good cause, ESPEC does define that. And also our local policy and legal policy, DFE. So good cause is serious illness or relocation of a spouse or relocation of the employee that needs to go take care of a spouse somewhere else or a family member. And there are mitigating factors that we can look at. Those include when an employee leaves and they assist us in finding a replacement. They work with us until a replacement can be found. They help train the replacement. They have good faith in their negotiations with us as they're leaving. And those are a few of the mitigating factors. So when an S, when a Chapter 21 employee resigns in the middle of the year, these are the things that we look at when we consider whether or not we're going to seek approval from you to report contract, contract abandonment to ESPEC and TEA.
All right, so the recommendation is, the administration recommends, recommends that the board find good cause did not exist under Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code for Amanda Guthrie to resign her contract for the 2022, 2023 school year, that the board did not consent to her resignation and that the board directs the superintendent to file a complaint with the State Board for Educator Certification to seek sanctions against her for abandonment of contract.
All right, and the way our agenda is set up, if during the course of a meeting, discussion of any item on the agenda should be held in closed meeting, which I believe this would fall under two code sections that we'll need to invoke here to go to executive session. The first is Section 551.071, private consultation with the board's attorney on any and all subject matters authorized by law. And 55.04, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duty, discipline or dismissal of a public officer employee. So we will head to executive session, discuss these items and then come out and then proceed with the vote. And that's at 9:22. We'll head to executive session.
We're back out of executive session and into open session at 9:50. We are on item H of the consent agenda, which was consider finding teacher's resignation after the school year began was without good cause and authorizing complaint to the state board of educators certification for abandonment and contract. We just discussed everything in the back and Dr. Ryan is going to read the recommendation one more time.
Administration recommends that the board find that good cause did not exist under chapter 21 of the Texas education code for Amanda Guthrie to resign her contract for the 2022-2023 school year, that the board did not consent to her resignation and that the board directs the superintendent to file a complaint with the state board for educators certification to seek sanctions against her for abandonment of contract.
Your recommendation, you have a motion?
I actually have a motion. I'd like to suspend Robert's rules pursuant to board policy BE local, no debate and just take a vote.
All right, well, is there a second?
A second.
Kathy seconds. According to local policy, be local, Robert's rules of order can be suspended as the procedure rules by a majority vote of the members present. Shannon's motion is not debatable or amendable, so we will proceed to the vote on Shannon Bronze, trustee Bronze's motion to have no debate and go straight to vote. All those in favor? Four? All those opposed?
The suspension, I believe, is by two-thirds vote, not majority.
Point of order, we've suspended the rules. We're no longer inherent to Robert's rules. We're under local policy, be local.
Two-thirds vote.
Now we'll proceed with the recommendation of Dr. Ryan in item H, which states the following. I just, I just read it. So we will proceed with the vote on Dr. Ryan's recommendation. All those in favor? Five, all those opposed? Two, motion passes or vote passes five to two. Now we are in the announcements section. Anyone have any announcements? Coley?
I have a couple of things. I want to express my gratitude to the folks at Bridges. We had an opportunity last week to do mock interviews with the students over at Bridges to help prepare them for jobs. And I got a couple of lovely cards for being a part of that. And there were several folks, Jimmo and Dave were both there, Doug Noel, there were several folks from throughout our community helping those students learn how to interview and present themselves. And so that was a lovely event. I will encourage everybody to get, look at the PTA websites. There's lots of signups for things happening right now and pies for teachers. So there's chances at schools all throughout our district to buy a pie for a teacher if you haven't. Yeah, Thanksgiving pies. So if you look, I know that several PTAs have their signups out there where you can either donate money for a pie or a pie pie. So anyway, happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Enjoy your holidays.
Brian?
We do have a lot of exciting things happening on Friday. The Colwell Heritage volleyball team is playing in the state tournament, state semifinals at one o'clock on Friday in Garland. And then the Gravon High School Mustangs are playing at Crowley. They're playing Abilene Cooper, I believe, at Crowley. And here at home at Mustang Panther Stadium, Colwell Heritage is playing Abilene Wiley. So a lot of things happening in the championship sports arenas here in GCIST.
Everyone have a happy Thanksgiving. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Coley?
A move that we adjourn.
Second, Kathy seconds. All those in favor? Most passes seven zero. Thank you, Coley.